I call to order the City Council meeting of August 1st, 2019. It's roughly 7:36 PM. And City Hall chambers, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the flag salute. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with heavy hearts again, Lord, because of the things that have happened in our city the past few weeks. The shootings, the deaths, and the turmoil it's caused throughout the community, the loved ones, the friends that have been touched by this. We think of all that tonight, Lord God, and we think of how it's happened before, and we've come with the same feelings, the same thoughts, the same sentiments. Lord, we need your help. We can make plans, we can organize, we can do certain things. We can talk about phrases and law and order and cleaning up the streets, but we realize at the root, Lord, it's a condition of the human heart, condition of the soul, environment, so many things go into it. It is complicated, but it is a human problem, and we pray for your help, Lord God, to help us solve this. We pray for courage, to press through. We pray for hope, Lord, because hope is a rare commodity for many throughout our community and throughout our nation, Lord God, and really around the world. But we're praying for Williamsport tonight that you would help us to have a spirit of hope and not despair. And, Lord, we pray for strength, Lord God, to carry on. Lord, Jesus taught us how to pray, and at the end of that prayer, He said we should pray that you would deliver us from evil. And, Lord, people do things, but it's from an evil motivation that comes from a variety of places, and we pray that we would be delivered from that. In this city, Lord, help us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three tonight, approval of City Council minutes for 7:18, 19. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Comments, discussions, corrections, in council tonight? Hearing done. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes.
Item four, limited courtesy of the floor. We don't have anybody, any requests tonight, so we will move on to item five, election of new council member and oath. I'm going to defer to our solicitor. How do we open this, or is there a...
You mean in terms of voting on...
Yeah. Do we just open it up for nominations?
Yeah, I think you can open up for nominations, and if there's only one nomination.
We can, we would discuss, there were only two applicants, so if there were two nominations, we would discuss those as they came up?
Yes, you can, but if there's only one nomination, there's only someone who can vote on if they're actually nominated.
Okay. Do we have to nominate before we have a discussion?
That would be the normal order.
Okay.
But if you want to, if you want to send...
All right. It's uncharted territory. Since I've been on council to do this, I sat in the...
Fortunately.
Yeah, fortunately, yeah. I sat in the audience the last time it happened, but I certainly wasn't taking notes and don't remember. So, is there a preference from council on how to proceed with it? If there isn't, I'll just open it for nominations, and we can make comments on that. Okay. Is there a nomination for Ms. Mealy?
I would nominate Jerry Fosnot to fill Dr. Williamson's unexpired term.
Speak. Mr. Noviello.
And I would nominate James Gardner from 1305 Louisa Street.
So we have two nominations on the floor now, and we can discuss?
I would do, if there aren't any others, I would do a motion to close the nomination.
Okay. Motion to close nominations?
Second.
That pass, yeah. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Nominations are closed. Now we can have a discussion. I'll just defer to whoever wants to discuss.
We interviewed both candidates, one in person and one through a phone call, and I think we all had, were impressed with what was, who applied for this. It was really kind of interesting. You had youth on one hand, and you had experience on the other hand, and both people were just really, really incredible candidates for this. They really were. Jerry, we know because she has been on council before, did a good job, and I think at this point in time, I think Jerry would be a very good candidate for filling the seat of Dr. Williamson, having the experience, and especially with the next five months that we're going into, they will be our busiest months of the year, really, when you take into consideration we're doing budget on top of everything else that we have to do with the city. So to me, I think Jerry Fosnot would be our best candidate at this point, even though Mr. Gardner, he was 22 years old, incredible resume, full of enthusiasm to get into politics and especially with city politics. One of the things we did ask him is if he would be willing to serve in other capacities on other committees within the city. He said yes. So we're hoping that he will get involved in city, somewhere in the city, be it a commission or something to that effect. We don't want to lose his enthusiasm because he was really a great candidate. So my vote, I think, would go for Jerry.
Ms. Mealy.
I would just, second what Bonnie said, we were exceptionally fortunate. We had two candidates, and both candidates were of an excellent caliber, and frankly, I would be proud to serve with either of them on City Council, have in fact served with Mrs. Fosnot on City Council, but they are both excellent candidates. The issue here in this particular case is the shortness of the term and the learning curve involved with the short-term service on City Council. And consequently, as I said, really, I can't think of the last time that I was fortunate to interview only really qualified candidates for a position, but I would support Mrs. Fosnot because she has the experience that we'll need to get through the next five months.
Mr. Slaughter.
And I agree with both of those sentiments as well. I think Mr. Gardner definitely has a promising future and career ahead of him. It was very, as they all said, enlightening to hear from him as well, but given the relatively short time period, I will be supporting Mrs. Fosnot as well, given her experience and history with council.
Mr. Noviello.
I'm going to support Mr. Gardner this evening, but that in no way really suggests that I have any lack of respect for Mrs. Fosnot's knowledge, her capacity, past experience, or her desire to serve. Her work in this community is quite well-known and certainly well-deserved. As a matter of fact, I took heed of her own words in the local media when she stated herself that we need people to learn about government. We need people to serve. It's sad that only two individuals wanted to be interviewed. As she and I are both educators, I'm sure she understands why I might seek to encourage a youthful, potential up-and-comer who in fact has earned some impressive credentials, worthy of some serious consideration, as was already mentioned here this evening. I cast my vote to reflect a measure of respect and inspiration for Mr. Gardner in hopes he might consider serving on those community committees and boards, as was mentioned as well, and to gain some insight and experience as the availability presents itself. It's my hope we see him continue his endeavor to serve our community as he continues his studies, and I thank both candidates for offering their service, and I hope others heed Mrs. Fosnot's comments as well. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson.
I appreciate the comments of everybody. I was unable to be at the special meeting. I had a funeral that I was attending, and so I was unable to be at the special meeting where both of the candidates were interviewed. Looking over the resumes, it's hard to make a choice like that because they're both very qualified, but I would have to say, in this case, while I want to be an encouragement, and I think we can be a help to Mr. Gardner, really, our vote has to be cast for the good of the city, and in this short term, I think it would benefit the city more if Mrs. Fosnot was the other member of council. So I will be casting my vote for her.
Thank you. I think everybody's spoken with me. I approached the interviews with, not knowing how many we were going to have at first, but with the perspective of the individual who filled this seat before and who were filling the seat with his seat tonight, and the leadership, his expertise, combined with his intelligence, but also his ability to break things down, convey them, and operate in a lot of different areas well, including finance across the board. We lost a strong individual, and I tried to take that into account because my concern is that, not that Mr. Gardner wasn't qualified at all, but to finish out the last five months of the year, I feel like the council needs to be as strong as we possibly can. We have a lot of issues going on right now internally and externally, that I feel the council needs to be a source of stability for our city government and our city. To do that, we need to be, everyone needs to be up to speed. That's not to say that we're having an election, there are going to be new people on council. That's not to say there is never a time when there, inexperience isn't brought on, brought in to council, because Councilwoman Mealy and I came on at the same time with the same learning curve in front of us, and we were fortunate to have...
One of us made it through faster than the other.
Yeah, but I caught up to you eventually. So going through that experience, we'll be needing to help people through that next year, but right now, since it is a short term, we need to look at it in a different way, and that's why I'm supporting Jerry Fosnot tonight. But we had an excellent conversation with Mr. Gardner, and he knows where he's going, and he knows what he wants to do, and I'm sure he's going to achieve the goals that he has. So how do we handle...
When you're ready to take a vote, I would do a vote by last name.
Okay. Okay, let's, we'll do it in the order of the nominations.
You can just do one vote, and each council member just says the last name of the person who they're voting.
Oh, I see. Okay. That's easy, that way. Okay. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Okay, Gardner.
Mr. Henderson.
Fosnot.
Mrs. Katz.
Fosnot.
Mr. Slaughter.
Fosnot.
Ms. Mealy.
Fosnot.
Mr. Allison.
Fosnot. Five to one vote, Mrs. Fosnot is appointed to City Council. Do we swear her in now? Oh, yes, you're going to have to sit up here with us. Although she didn't have an agenda or anything.
I state upon it, Gerald Fosnot, I solemnly swear it firm, that I obey and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and I will discharge the duties of my office for the delegation. Thank you so much. Please give us one more. Sure.
Mrs. Fosnot, and we don't have a packet for you, unfortunately, we didn't, but you're welcome if you'd like to, and I'm sure you can, I can share some pages with you. Do you?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to item six, Newberry Committee Partnership Presentation. Would you give your name and address, please, for the record?
Alana Gabriel, 2336 West Fourth Street.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, President Allison, Vice President Mealy, members of City Council, and members of the administration, and the public. We are members of the Newberry Community Partnership. As an organization, we've worked with the city and other agencies to solve problems before, and we'd like to do it again on this particular issue that we're presenting tonight. With the West Fourth Street improvements, over 50 trees were removed in Newberry, and in our efforts to have them replaced, we have had to work through misinformation and passive opposition from PennDOT. For the record, we want to present the problem and our perspective on the solution, and we ask that you take action with us to revise PennDOT's blueprint, which leaves West Fourth
Thank you, Alana. I'm Bob Woodley. I live at 823 Poplar Street.
Welcome.
I am also a member of the Newberry Community Partnership, and I am the editor of our publication, Inside Newberry, and thank you for welcoming us to your meeting tonight. I am very familiar with this issue because I moderated a public meeting hosted by the Newberry Community Partnership at the West End Christian Community Center earlier this year about the trees that were to be removed and the issue of replacing them. During that public meeting, we learned that there was a conflict between the city's ordinance, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the amount of space available between property and street. The ADA requires a minimum width of sidewalk, while the city requires a minimum width for a strip of land where trees can be planted. Specifically, the PennDOT representative at the meeting told us that the paved area of the sidewalk needed to be five feet wide, while the city ordinance requires a strip of land to be 30 inches wide to plant trees. This leaves much of the Fourth Street's tree lawns six inches too narrow to plant any types of trees. However, after some research, we discovered that the ADA actually requires a minimum width of three paved feet, not five, as long as there are five feet wide passing lanes every 200 feet of sidewalk. Now this means that with proper planning, all the trees can be replaced. Thinking that PennDOT had perhaps missed this detail, we met with them to show them how this problem could be resolved through a little redesigning. They were polite but have not yet changed the plans. We can accomplish the wishes of the majority of Newberry residents who want the trees replaced, and we can do so without being in violation of city ordinances, state laws, or federal regulations. With proper planning, all the trees can be replaced, but PennDOT is not currently inclined to respect the wishes of our neighborhood, the public good of a tree-lined street, or the city's replanting ordinance. To talk more about that, please welcome Margaret Tupper. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Margaret Tupper. I live at 810 Arch Street in Newberry. According to City Ordinance 5538, Section 915.16, which was approved October 3rd, 1991, trees removed due to city projects, such as what PennDOT is doing in the west end of town, shall be replaced. In replacing city sidewalks, the American Disability Act requirements are supposed to be met, which is what Bob just told you, creating in an older streetscape a conflict in the use of the public space between the curb and the property lines. We have looked at that, and there are streetscape designs that allow both trees in a tree lawn, which is the 30 inches Bob talked about, and the requirements of the ADA Act. It seems to us reasonable and also a right course of action to replace the over 50 trees along the seven-tenth of a mile where they were removed on West Fourth Street. Bernie and Bernice Dintcher have volunteered to offer to pay for trees and supply trees that would meet city requirements and specifications for those spaces in the tree lawn, and other volunteers have also come forward. They have also volunteered the labor needed to plant the trees. If the trees shall be replaced according to the city without additional funds to the city budget, why would PennDOT refuse to redesign the seven-tenth mile streetscape of West Fourth Street for the good of the neighborhood and the Newberry community? Thank you.
My name is Robbie Cross, and I live at 800 Diamond Street in Newberry, and thank you, council members, for having us NewBeryans in this evening.
Welcome.
I won't take up much time. I passed out to council members reasons why trees are good to have. Let me just say that when I first started looking into this, I was merely looking at the aesthetic values, which are strong enough. I mean, living around beautiful trees is much more pleasant than not, but there are so many other reasons. Once I began to look into it, everything from reducing crime, actually, to health, to purifying air, there are so many reasons, good, solid reasons, to have trees, and the list that I gave you folks is not exhaustive, that we should all, it seems to me, be embracing trees in our neighborhoods. Anyway, thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Michelle Frye. I live at 2510 West Fourth Street. Thank you for having us here tonight. As you've heard, the Newberry Community Partnership is one of the groups that was developed from the city's neighborhood focus initiative almost 20 years ago. We are doing our best collectively to keep Newberry a growing and valuable part of Williamsport. With our many schools, our historic baseball fields, our established businesses like the Dunkin' Donuts, and our growing businesses like the Diamond Square Market, we can all agree, I think, that Newberry is a special place, and it ought to be preserved. We have met with PennDOT, we have canvassed the neighborhood, and we have familiarized ourselves with the applicable laws and regulations. Taking all of those things into account and consideration, we have presented an appropriate and achievable solution, but our voice thus far has not been heard by PennDOT. We're here today, therefore, to ask City Council to protect our neighborhood and to act now by instructing PennDOT to replace all 51 trees that have been removed from the tree lawn of West Fourth Street in the Newberry section of Williamsport. Further, we ask that the petition that I'd like to present to council tonight be distributed to Governor Wolf, to the State Transportation Secretary, Leslie Richards, and to the Director of PennDOT, District 3. And lastly, I want to thank the city employees and the city officials who have already joined us for this goal, and I thank you on behalf of the partnership for having us here tonight. If I can approach, I'd be happy to present you with the petitions. I'm told we have collectively 230, 229 signatures. So can it come up?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Certainly, we'd be willing to answer any questions we have.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to adjaze. I didn't have that part in my notes.
Comments from council tonight? Ms. Mealy.
I'd like to say that I, for one, and I think I probably speak for at least most of City Council in saying this, appreciate the efforts of the Newberry Community Partnership in particular because, as many of Williamsport's citizens may not know, PennDOT actually is responsible for paving a number of roads in the city, owns a number of roads that are effectively highways, and what that means is that by sort of beginning the debate about how PennDOT acts when it rebuilds streets in the city now, with one of the first streets that has been rebuilt in a while, aids the city in determining, in beginning negotiations with PennDOT when we rebuild other streets. We know that we're looking at the reconstruction of West and East Third Street here in a couple of years, and obviously, we need to make certain that we preserve the urban fabric and the neighborhood feel of each of our neighborhoods as we work on repaving projects. As a city, of course, we can do that, and as a city, we do work, we plant, on average, about 75 new street trees every year. As a city, we do work to maintain and improve our urban forest, but projects like this, if they're not sort of properly handled between the city and PennDOT, can obviously turn into a loss of both urban forest and community fabric, and that's had the potential to be an issue. So the folks who have been working so hard in Newberry to put together a movement to replace these trees, I think, are not simply working to better their own neighborhood, but are also helping us to prepare a plan of action moving forward as well. And so I applaud the work that you've done so far. I am pleased that we have a bit more time yet to work on most of that tree replacement with PennDOT, which I think will give us, will allow us to increase in leverage, and I look forward to continuing to talk about trees for a while here. And I look forward to continuing to talk about trees for a while here. I'm sure you all do, too. Anyway, thank you.
Mrs. Katz.
One of the things that the Newberry Partnership said at one of our meetings, which I thought was really interesting, go to the top of Fourth Street and look down. And I did that, and it was, it really took me aback because I lived on Fourth Street. And to see what it looks like now with no trees there is really kind of appalling. It really is. It just takes away from the neighborhood and the beauty of the neighborhood. So I can understand fully and grasp why we are so desperate to get those trees put back in there once the street is finished. And it is vitally important, and I am really thankful that we have so many of you that are not giving up. I mean, Pendot has been frustrating to all of us. It's not just a couple, it is all of us. As far as Adam goes from Streets and Parks, I know he has worked very hard with all of you to try and come to an understanding with Pendot, but they ignore him as much as everybody else at times, and it's just very frustrating. But I think if you keep up, keep up that whole momentum of what you're doing, maybe we can finally crash through those doors and accomplish what we want to do. It is not fair for Dintcher and Dintcher to donate those trees when Pendot has already taken away what they should replace, because that's a huge expense for a privately-owned company to do that, if nobody has taken that into consideration. That's a lot of money coming out of their pockets that they were doing out of the goodness of their hearts to make Newberry look terrific again. We appreciate it tremendously, we really do, and I think you all appreciate it tremendously, that they stepped up to that. But it's, to me, it's up to Pendot to replace what they've taken away from us. And thank you again for everything that you are doing, and you know, we're behind you.
I just want to point one thing you said. We can't wait till a street is done to plan for trees. The trees need to be part of this.
Right, right.
The plan can begin.
Right.
Otherwise, you're digging a construction that has already been done.
Right.
Trees need to be part of the plan.
Understand that.
Mr. Novio.
I could fully understand the idea of wanting to place certain utilities under the sidewalk areas as opposed to in the driving lanes. Just seemed to be a logical decision. I didn't support the idea of taking all the trees out without replacing them. I think, as was already noted here, there would be space and room available to do that. I also agree with Mrs. Katz about the idea of having one particular entity pay for all the trees and the labor and such involved. And I appreciate the effort of all the petitioners and all those who, I'm assuming, knocked on doors to get those signatures. And believe me, we, many of us up here understand what knocking on doors is all about. So I appreciate those kind of efforts, and I think you'll find, at least from my point of view, you'll find full support from this body in regards to doing as much as we can to pressure Pendot into reconsidering their design in the best possible fashion to give us the treescape that I think is so much needed in that area up there, as it is around the city. If you would consider the entire city, it would be one of the only, I would say, baldest spots in the city, if we're going to have this go in this scenario. I also look at that section of Fourth Street, as most of you who live in the area know, as a bit of an entranceway into the city. And to have that nice row of trees there, and it's a pretty stately view as you come down through there in years past, I'd like to see that return. So you certainly will have my support, as I think you will have as the remainder of council here as well. Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Henderson.
I will applaud the Newberry Partnership as well. I appreciate a neighborhood, a community, that takes initiative and works through solutions and does that without running to the government and saying, hey, you got to figure this out, but you have done your work as a community because it's your streets there. And so I appreciate that. And that is an example, I think, to all of us, all of our neighborhoods within the city, how we ought to be functioning. And my personal philosophy is that good neighbors make a strong community, which in turn makes a great nation. And so I think you are showing that, and so I applaud that. I was interested to hear the reference you made to our Williamsport law that requires that we replace the trees that we remove. I find it interesting that Pendot wants to respect our laws with regard to the space between the sidewalk and the street, but they aren't wanting to respect and honor the law that demands that they replace the tree. And I think that's something interesting that we should certainly pursue, that may give us some more help as we continue to pursue down this path. I would agree with Mr. Novio. I think you will find support, and we will do everything we can to help you in this battle with Pendot, and hopefully, we will be triumphant. So thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Slatter.
Obviously, I echo everybody's sentiments as well, and will do everything I can to nudge Pendot and others. I think we do just need to remain mindful of deadlines as Pendot moves forward. I don't know the deadlines for their plans or their implementation in the start, you know, that seven-tenth of a mile, but I think we need to keep that in mind. We're all in support of it, and just make sure that, you know, we have Pendot's here prior to them breaking ground, so that way, we can hopefully restructure or reorganize the plan before they start work and it's too late. So obviously, support the efforts. I'm in Newberry quite a bit. I don't live technically in Newberry, but very close to Newberry, and so, you know, I am sensitive to their concerns and needs, so I'm behind it, obviously, a hundred percent.
A new voice. I was a charter member of your organization when you first began a long time ago, and you certainly, after thirteen years of driving into Newberry every day, those trees are important. And as I read the response that Mr. Allison wrote to you, we need some support. You wrote that?
No.
Oh.
Mrs. Spazna, or Ms. Mealy wrote the draft letter.
I put Randy's name on it, so he takes blame.
That's okay. Take credit for that.
Okay, that's going to stop right now.
It's so important. Dr. Cooper would be so proud of you. I don't know if you remember him, but he was the tree man in town a long time ago, and he insisted that we become a tree city, and that we plant every and any tree that came down, we put a new tree in its place, and that's what we need to do. So not only good luck to you, but we will stand behind you in your efforts.
So to that end, I think you have a consensus, a unanimous consent to back you, and we do have a draft letter, it's probably in its final draft, to be sent to Pendot. And I think we look at this as not a one-and-done effort. We want a partnership with you. It is important, we found out the hard way on different projects, once the engineering is done, some organizations will not go back and redo the engineering. So it's important that we have a conversation with them about where they're at, as far as that's concerned, as soon as possible, so we know that the things that, it looks very straightforward. I want to thank you for your presentation tonight. It was very concise but chock-full of information from each one of you that shared, and that each one dovetailed together nicely. You did a great job there. So you have your act together, and we know that. We want a partnership with you, and the city does as well. I know Mr. Winder feels the same way. We're going to work as a team to, because we do want to see this kind of effort duplicated, as Ms. Mealy said, throughout the city when we're, so we're cutting our teeth on this one so that we're, we have something in place going forward. We don't have anything to vote on tonight, but I think you got a unanimous vote of support tonight from council, and we'll be there with you through the rest of this process. Thank you for all your effort and your passion, and deeply appreciated.
Thank you.
Grassroots is where it's at, right? If you want to get things done. But then you need the bureaucracies to respond to that. Okay, let's move to item seven, resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the PA Historical and Museum Commission in the city of Williamsport. I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion in a second.
Good evening.
Ms. Young.
This resolution approves an agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office for the city to continue as a certified local government, or better known as a CLG. The city has been a CLG since 1995, and the guidelines for the program have recently been revised, and we've been asked to sign a new certification agreement. As a CLG, the city has access to a dedicated grant program, pro bono design and planning assistance, and priority consideration for certain DCED funds and historic preservation grants. Once this agreement is executed, the city's current preservation program will be evaluated. This assessment will include a list of recommendations that may require the city to review and possibly amend its ordinances or revise some policies. These recommendations would be for the city's designated historic district, properties on the National Register of Historic Places, and any city-owned historic resources. It's possible that we may already be doing many of the items that would be recommended, but if not, the city will have the next four years to implement the recommendations. This agreement also offers the city the option to terminate participation in the CLG program at any time. And this agreement was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. It was reviewed by Finance? Ms. Mealy.
Yes, this was reviewed by Finance and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Effectively, as I understand it, we have a relatively limited opportunity to opt in to continuing as a certified local government, but then an unlimited opportunity to opt out. There are some regulations that are changing. We are not clear at this point on the extent to which we will already have most of the, excuse me, to which we will already have the ordinances and the policies and procedures in place to meet those requirements. And, you know, it's entirely likely that whatever requirements we do need to meet over the next four years will be in the best interest of the city and our historic district as well. But this simply allows us to move forward with the process of finding out what a certified local government is going to look like four years from now, and decide if that's something that we can participate in. This program has been the source of a small grant that we receive annually that supports the work done by our Historic Architectural Review Board. As the modified programming will also put us, if we continue to be a certified local government, will put us slightly higher in line for certain other grants handed by, distributed by DCED and...
Yeah, any historic preservation grants, we would get priority consideration.
And so that, of course, would be a good step, as long as meeting the requirements is not too onerous for the city. That said, as I said, we forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Any comments or questions from council members? If not, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Mrs. Spazna.
Yes.
Mr. Novio.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. I wanted to move this up before and forgot, I will move the item ten certificate of appropriateness up at this point. Mr. Gerardi.
Good evening, President Allison, members of council. What you have before you is a certificate of appropriateness request for three-twenty-one Pine Street. This is to remove the existing wall-mounted sign, and they'd like to replace it with a four-foot-tall by fourteen-foot-long LED channel-lettered sign internally illuminated. I have a picture of what the sign looks like, and if you look at the second picture back, you'll see the old sign and then the new sign, how it's going to look when it's built. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have of me.
Any questions? None?
Okay. None? Not a single question? Ms. Mealy, not one question?
You know, I worked on it, Joe.
I don't think this has ever happened before, so we've always had something. Okay, Mrs. Frank.
Did you get a motion?
No, we didn't have it. Is there a motion?
No move.
Sorry. Motion in a second. Now we can vote.
Ms. Spazna.
Yes.
Mr. Novio.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slatter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Mr. Gerardi. And we'll move up to, back up to item eight, resolution authorizing the signature of the agreement for a tree-vitalized grant.
A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to DCNR for the tree revitalized program.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Winder, welcome.
Good evening, sir. This grant is for the 2020 tree-vitalized grant. It would cover the cost of eighty trees. It's the same grant we apply for every year. It would be in total amount of nine-thousand-five-hundred-forty-eight dollars. The grant requires a hundred percent match, which is with in-kind services such as labor and volunteer efforts. We would be planting trees on Baldwin Street from Huffman Avenue to Eldred Street, Campbell Street from High Street to Memorial Avenue, replacing trees in Brandon Park that have come down due to storms, and we would be planting trees on Little League Boulevard. We are planting some this fall, but this would fill in the rest of that area next And this was reviewed by Finance.
Finance, yes. Was reviewed by Finance.
Finance got everything this week. So Finance did review this and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Obviously, it is desirable to continue with the tree-vitalized program. It's served us fairly well in the past, and we've been able, it's enabled us to plant, on average, about seventy-five new street trees over the last couple of years, with the exceptional one that we missed. And the only requirement for the grant is an in-kind match from the city, either in volunteer labor or city labor, so there's really no outlay of funds on our part. So it's small, but every little bit, every little bit counts, and it's a partnership with the state that I think, I would say, has probably benefited us in a couple of ways. It maintains a good relationship with certain elements within state government that it produces to maintain a storm relationship with. That said, Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
We did. Questions or comments? Mr. Novio.
Adam, as I went past her today, I saw some work being done on the Boulevard today. Does it have anything to do with what we're doing here now?
The work on Washington Boulevard, or on Little League Boulevard is for the Pathway to Health, which is trees, some sidewalk work, or I'm sorry, not trees, lights, sidewalk work, another portal. The trees are something we have to do as the city. It wasn't part of Pendot's grant. The other part of what we have to do is the paving. So this is how the trees run into effect with the, 2019 tree-vitalized grant, trees run into effect with the Pathway to Health project.
I can recall, as being on the Pathway to Health Committee, that we had spoken about some landscaping there some time back, and that would have probably included some shrubbery or something of some effect, possibly some trees. Is that going any further, or do we know anything less?
I'll refer to Chris Kaiser.
There he is. He's hiding in the corner there. Thanks, Chris.
Good evening, everyone. So I guess, are you looking for a rundown on Pathway Phase Four? So they were out currently putting, they were doing directional boring, so they're getting... getting the cable and conduit ready for the streetlights. But there are no, there are no street trees under the PennDOT, what we allotted for the PennDOT work, to include trees, other than the demolition, because of all the trees are, for the most part, ash, and have emerald ash borer. So the streetlights will continue, there'll be a continuation of the historic light, like was done on Phase Three, within the historic district, and then we'll stop around Edwin Street, and then we'll pick up the Sternberg light from Edwin up to Little League, and then down Little League, all the way to Hepburn. So we're able to, with the PennDOT work that's going to happen with the 84M project in 2020, that work will happen from Campbell Street south to Fourth Street, which was the original Phase Four project area. So we worked it out with PennDOT to essentially take those lights that were planned for Campbell Street and extend them from Walnut down to Hepburn Street. That way, the whole Little League Boulevard would be, would have the same light. Because earlier, I want to say 2005 or '06, we came east to west on Little League Boulevard. So now that all Little League Boulevard will have the same continuous streetlight.
Thank you, Chris.
But there, and there will be a portal similar to the one that's at, on Maynard Street, will also be in place at just a little bit north of Edwin, just about the line of the historic district. So it'll have the sconce lights, same stonework.
It's like the uniformity of that. Appreciate that. Thank you, Chris.
Yep, you're welcome.
Ms. Mealy.
One more question for you, Chris, before you go sit back down, or maybe one more question for me. Sorry, since we're already discussing PennDOT and street trees tonight. But help me understand, is that something that isn't usually included in PennDOT grants, if you're looking for PennDOT grants? Or, I'm trying to remember the other phases, if they, if we included street trees in those or not?
I think these estimates are always done three, four, five years before projects, then as you get into design--
So what you're saying is we got a certain bundle of money--
Right.
But in the end, it didn't cover all of the elements of the project?
Right.
And it's pretty easy to go back in and put trees on Little League Boulevard because we have a, it's an eight-foot tree lawn, I believe?
Yes, it's a much wider--
Yeah, right.
And we've tried to keep, you know, we kept the existing trees that are there now, the zelkovas that are there, so--
Got it. Well, that's, I mean, that seems like a wise decision, if the money's not stretching quite far enough to try and fill in with something like that, that can be easily inserted later. But just wondering whether that was a PennDOT policy or whether that was a decision.
It's not their, it's not their policy, and I would have to go back in time to look at the actual amount we asked for as a city, and what we ended up getting in the grant. I'm not sure that they even matched up same, you know, if that was the same number.
Got it. Yeah, no, I think we've seen a handful of times even this year, the discrepancy between what we, what we ask for, what we plan for, and where it actually stretches to when we wind up moving the project forward. So, yeah, thank you, Chris.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Winder gave us a nice breakdown of all the trees and addresses they're going to, and the tree lawn width, which is something now that's a matter of concern, that, but they range from three and a half feet to, well, to eight feet on Little League Boulevard. So there's quite a variety of different widths throughout the city. If there are no more questions, we'll have the vote, please. Mrs. Frank.
Mrs. Spalsna.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Winder, and Mrs. Frank. The motion passes as well. Then that brings us to item nine, resolution to approve a multimodal transportation fund grant agreement for Basin Street and Franklin Street.
Resolution to approve a multimodal transportation fund grant agreement for the Basin Street and Franklin Street reconstruction project.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Kremszer from RVT is here tonight, too.
Good evening, President Allison, Vice President Mealy, members of council. In front of you is the resolution to authorize the city of Williamsport to execute reimbursement agreement for the PennDOT multimodal transportation funds grant. This fund, or this grant, will be going towards the Franklin Street realignment, as well as the Basin Street reconstruction project. That will be the realignment with Franklin and Basin, with new curbing and new paving, as well as the reconfiguration of Basin Street into two-way traffic from one way, median and rain garden, new sidewalks, as well as street trees and pedestrian scale lighting. This has also been brought forth to Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Kremszer. Ms. Mealy, Finance.
Finance did review this and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. As you'll notice, this is a relatively minor resolution. In fact, we, we accept, we applied for the grant, we accepted the grant funds. This is merely a reimbursement agreement that we need to sign in order to receive those funds at some point here in the future. The work on Basin and Franklin is underway, and as likely everyone who lives in the city of Williamsport has noticed by now, and we understood in one, one of the bright notes during the discussion, we understand from Mr. Kremszer that early November is the expected completion date, which I suppose, if many people like me are wondering exactly when those streets are going to open back up again, there you go. But that said, it was a positive recommendation from Finance.
Comments or questions?
The most incredible thing with this is what was told to us, is that this is only one of 10 funding sources. When you stop and think about that, that's a lot of funding sources going into this, and trying to bring it all together, and then accomplish it by November, which is going to be incredible. It really is. But I think we're all looking forward to having the street open.
Yes.
And trying to sort out which money's going where--
Exactly.
Presumably, and which grants, yeah.
That's, that's always the fun game.
Yeah, that sounds like a blast, Mr. Kremszer.
But we appreciate the $1.2 million grant, absolutely. Any other questions? Mr. Henderson.
Thank you. This is another resolution. We've gotten a couple of these recently where, I think, for various reasons, we hadn't gotten it in our Friday packet, and it wasn't placed on the original agenda. And there's some leeway and flexibility for different reasons, but this kind of came up a little bit later, and while we were all working through it, I know we didn't, we didn't get this until Tuesday, the day of our committee meetings. And so that kind of stretched us all just a little bit. You know, after seeing it, you know, obviously, it is very, it's simple. It's just, you know, kind of approving what we've already sought for and already worked through. And so for that reason, you know, it's a simple vote tonight. But I wonder if you would just inform me, because I wasn't here on Tuesday, I guess why it couldn't be, or shouldn't be, delayed till our next council meeting, when it would normally work through the whole process a little bit more.
Unfortunately, with, well, first, I'd like to say thank you for accepting this beyond the deadline. Second would be, unfortunately, with the pushed council meeting, there is also a six-week lead time with PennDOT, once this is submitted to them, for them to go over, and this is down at their headquarters in Harrisburg. Additionally, from there, we are, at this point, receiving payment requests from Paul Baker, and this money would be going towards that.
And thank you, I appreciate you explaining that, and that's, that's very helpful. And as I said before, there are, there are many times where we have to kind of push it a little bit, and perhaps this is one of those. But thank you for bringing that forward.
Well, well taken, Mr. Henderson. We've, we're working on getting things in a timely manner, and it's, let me say, our department heads are, are working as hard as they can--
Yes.
--to do those things. And under, there's certain circumstances sometimes make it more difficult for them, but we appreciate what they do, and fully support them in that.
Agreed.
While we're still working towards that end. Well then, no more questions or comments. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Spalsna.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We're down to item 11, except for filing Public Works Minutes 52119 and Finance Committee Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments or corrections from council members? Hearing done. Mrs. Frank, on the motion, please.
Mrs. Spalsna.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. Item 12 is announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, August 29th, 2019. That's four weeks from tonight at 7:30 PM in city hall council chambers. Upcoming meetings, Monday, August 5th at noon, Planning Commission. Monday, August 12th at 4:00 PM, Rec Commission. Tuesday, August 13th, 4:00 PM, Joel Garrison Day. Wednesday, August 14th, 5:30 is the Grand Slam Parade. Thursday, August 15th, 10:30 AM, Zoning Hearing Board, 4:00 PM, Board of Health. Monday, August 19th at noon, the Planning Commission. Tuesday, August 20th, 10:00 AM, Blighted Property. 3:30 PM, tentatively is scheduled ERC, we'll see what happens there. 6:30 PM, Harb. Friday, August 23rd, 5:00 PM, Williamsport Welcomes the World. Monday, August 26th, 12:00 PM, Planning Commission. Tuesday, August 27th, 11:00 AM, Historic Preservation. 1:00 PM, Finance. 2:30 PM, Public Works. 3:30, Public Safety. Wednesday, August 28th, 11:30 AM, Redevelopment Authority. And Thursday is our council meeting. That brings us to the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. Any comments from council?
Just to remind everybody, this is First Friday coming up, and it's Kids' Day. Everybody bring their families downtown, because there's more kids' activity, and I think it's the Kiwanis Club that has their, their setup in the Bullfrog parking lot. And as usual, a lot of entertainment, a lot of vendors come down and enjoy all the fun.
Any other comments from council? If not, I have one. Something we've discussed for some time amongst ourselves is having a Williamsport City Government Ethics Commission in place to be a, a group that deals with those things that come up in city government in a lot of different areas. Tonight, we'll talk about that more later, because we'll have an ordinance that we're going to vote on to establish that commission, and we'll have the details on that. But tonight, I'm appointing an ad hoc committee of all of council that's going to be chaired by Joel Henderson. Joel's already done research in this area on other cities that have ethic commissions, and how they operate, what they do. That, this ad hoc committee will hear the research that the commission brings back, and the ordinance that we're going to pass will form that commission. I can give you these details. There will be a five-member commission, three members appointed by council, two members accounted, appointed by the mayor, and they will be on a rotating basis, a staggered basis, rather, so that not all five, there'll be two, two, and one for different periods. So there's an orderly replacement and orderly people that will, for one reason or another, move off the commission. This is a serious thing. It's not meant to be a nitpicking commission that's going to be looking for things to, to deal with, but rather, I gather from what other cities have, it's there to be a check and a balance for things that are not done. We've, we've had a couple of those kinds of issues during our time on council, and it's a murky area. It's hard for council to get involved in different things without it looking political. It would be hard for an administration to get involved in areas like that without it looking political. This, this is a commission made up of citizens, and they would have a, a charge given them when they would be seated on this, to, to carry out the duties of the commission with due diligence and fairness and everything that would go with it. So I'm going to leave it at that for tonight. We'll have more in-depth discussion later. We have four weeks to our next meeting, and we'll have more information available at that time. So, but we have the ad hoc committee in place, and we will have more, more actions coming forward. We want it sooner rather than later, because we think it's best to get it in place as soon as possible. I will say this, there are some other things that we're looking at that are possible for, possible areas for council to, to take some initiatives that are, we've, that we've talked about for a while, that, just to get the ball rolling in that area. And we think it's time to, to proceed with that. Nothing is going to interfere with anything that the next administration and the next, next year's council, whoever is on that, is going to want to do, or proceed with, or have in their plans. More of a, an action, actions that maybe elaborate more on the legal parameters that council has to do certain things, and just to bring that more into the, the public light and public eye, so that there's a, we need a solid functioning government, and we want to be moving in that direction, and so that in January, who's, whatever, whoever the new administration is, whoever the new council members are, can all hit the ground running and have some tools right away to, if they're available, available to them to, to use and to explore. So that's all I'm going to say about that for right now, but it's going to be a busy year. I will say that. It's going to go fast. There are a lot of things that are going to be happening, and not least of which is, is our budget, so. Is there anything from the administration tonight? Mr. Girardi.
Yes, I don't want to take too much time, but what I passed out, which I didn't have enough copies, and I apologize, I'll make sure Janice gets two more, it's basically a copy of the tree ordinance. There's an area where I highlighted, it's where location, and it's one, two, and three that are asterisks. And the reason why I'm saying that is I think council is sending a letter out to PennDOT. I believe council has that ability to do more than just request, okay, trees. The only reason I'm bringing it up now is because PennDOT will be doing another large project in the city in 2020 to 2022, and there's probably about another 58 trees going down. So I think now would be the--
So I think now would be the time to do something about that. I talked to Adam about it and I just wanted to make sure you're aware of the ordinance and what it says because I think you have that ability to force the envelope if you wish, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Gerardi.
Yep.
Yes, we need every tool available. Ms. Mealy?
Just, I, I think a bit of the issue on this, in this particular case, Mr. Gerardi and everyone, is that PennDOT has an established standard procedure of laying all sidewalks at a five-foot width for the entirety of the sidewalk. And so we have to request that they deviate from their standard procedure, which is what's generating the conflict. There, there's no reason why they have to abide by that standard procedure. As we said, we can, we can definitely find a happy middle ground between being both ADA compliant and, and abiding by the city's ordinance. But they're maintaining that their standard procedure outweighs the city's ordinance.
And I disagree with you that they, they don't have to change to five, the trees is an option, if they wish to do that. But in ordinance, it's basically saying that if you have less of a width, it can be deviated by the discretion of our streets and council. So you could still force them to put a tree in, it could be maybe a smaller tree, but they have that ability to do that under the ordinance. That's how I interpret it, maybe something you want to talk to one of our attorneys about to make sure of that. But the width of the sidewalk, if they wish to go five, they can, it's up to them. But still, there's still, if it's three foot six, three foot, you put a different style tree or a different type of tree in that area, which is required by ordinance. Like Mr. Henderson said, you can't use part of the ordinance for you and not the other part. You've got to take the whole ordinance. People would not like me if I did that, thank you.
Right.
Well, I, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pavla?
On behalf of the administration, I'd like to introduce the council to the audience, Joellen Chapelle. She's the new city HR director. Joellen joined the city in early July and has been with us for about a month now, digging into the contracts and related items within her job description. I don't know, Joellen, do you want to introduce herself to council and?
Hello, everyone. It's nice to meet all of you. And I just wanted to say I'm very excited to be here. Very proud to be working with this team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the administration? Chief Hagan, we just want to salute you and the force for the efforts and the challenges before you, especially right now. And we thank you for, for being there when the city needs you. And it's not an easy task, but we know you're well capable and up to it, so we support you entirely. You're quite welcome. Questions or comments from the public tonight? Yeah, you can come over to the.
Good evening, I'm Tim McGomming, 505 South Street, apartment 42. I was wondering if the council has heard any information on bids for the possible ramp for City Hall or any part of the accessibility?
We haven't gotten a definite notification when the bid is going out that, that I could give you. But I'd rather, one thing we have talked about, and so I'm, I'm going to mention it now, is sooner rather than later, depending on the timeframe with the bids and everything, that we could move our council meetings to Trade and Transit Two, if we could work that out. And that would mitigate the, the ramp issue as far as the compacted time with the, the bids and, and all of that. So we have that discussion underway and we're going to pursue that. And when, when I have more definite information as far as the bid on the ramp, exactly when it's going to go out, I can let you know that. You're welcome. Any other comments tonight from the public? Before we adjourn, I have to announce that we're going to have a brief executive session after we close to discuss litigation. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.